Thank you.
She showed me what you physically have to do and it's... Well, this is right. Get that FGC light on. Those minutes have to be there. I'm doing stuff every day and I need that stuff. It's a pain to call Diane and say, "I want this," then I gotta find something else. Right now, I'm doing that stuff at Timber Creek and I've gotta go back to the 1986 original.
Okay, we're now at business items. Six A, WCI approval request for bond reduction for timberwood preserve.
Are we back on?
Yes.
April White, your business manager, for the record. Can I just take a minute for a couple of housekeeping issues to make sure that our minutes are being... Can be heard, so they can take sound minutes, is to remind our audience to come up to the podium and announce themselves and speak into the microphone. And also, we've got a lot of ground to cover tonight, so just make sure that your microphones are pulled close so everybody can be heard.
Yep, we do. We've got a number of items.
Okay. All right, where are we? Am I in the wrong? What are we on, six A?
Yes, timberwood preserve.
This is really just a housekeeping item. So, what we'll do in the future is when we transfer assets, we'll cover this at that time. And so, we get everything tidied up. But, WCI has requested a bond reduction and per the permit criteria, we allow that. And the engineers looked at this and legal looked at this. And I had went ahead and issued the letter, but legal had advised me to circle back and make sure that the board had approved a bond reduction.
She'll move.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? D. This is Century Link.
Madam Chairman, Mr. Colos just woke up on his show.
I didn't know it was for David.
Can we call that back? Next item.
Okay, so, the next item is we're trying to clean up a couple of different issues at Aviano out in Pelican. And so, I believe Tony is still working on some final closure of that project. And that was where there was a pipe underneath the corner of a building. We had to go back in and fill it in and reroute. So, I know that the engineers are still working on trying to get Tony settled up on making sure that the permit has been closed. And this is on the financial side with the contractor. So, there was some damage during construction and Eli was the contractor. And because of a time delay, apparently, they were out there working in November and Century Link was not notified of the damage until the resident returned. It was a seasonal resident. And then, in January, it was notified that there was no service. And so, Eli denied the claim that Century Link sent them based on the timing. And Century Link applied the damage bill to the district. And legal looked at that and apparently, that is...
That's correct under the 811 system.
Appropriate course of action. So, we have this bill with Century Link. So, what we're doing is we went back and I evaluated the final costs with Eli Construction. And what we're asking for today is to get permission to pay the Century Link damage, deduct it from the final payment from Eli contracting, and settle out the final bill with Eli so we can put the financial aspect of this to rest.
Sounds like a deal to me. I'm move approval.
You have a second?
Second.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next. This one will... This'll... This'll probably put wrench in the works.
Okay, so, the next item is to request approval of the storage facility. And that's one of the reasons why Tyler and Danny are still here. So, basically, what we brought... We had a conversation at one point, you know, we were trying to decide, well, you know, how do we want the Taj Mahal storage facility or what do we want exactly? So, I think, as it turns out, basically, after that conversation, the engineers went back and re-engineered their estimates. And of course, it came back a little bit more than we had originally talked about. But I think it was from that conversation where we were talking about security cameras, lighting, an electric gate, you know, gate access. So, these options have in here whether or not we want paving versus shell. And so, those are the things that need to be discussed today on whether or not we're going to move forward with this project, not move forward with it, modify what we're going to do with it.
Question? We're showing an expenditure of 285, 245, whatever. What's the estimated return on this? At one time, I saw something that you put out that was, we're currently making $10,000 to $14,000 on the current. Obviously, this one is much bigger. What are we looking at that will be the time we get this money back? Is it less than five years?
Yes.
Yes, and that's one of the reasons why part of the action that is being requested is to actually approve a proposed revenue model because our fee structure is fairly outdated. We did a comparison in the market and nobody charges per foot of the trailer. Everybody charges per foot of the space that they're leasing, that they're renting. So, one of the things that I provided for you on the summary is basically on whether or not we borrow for this or whether we don't borrow for this expenditure. I think, right now, that's probably our biggest conversation is, I think, we're to the point now that we would either have to borrow for this expenditure or postpone this project. But definitely, depending on whether we borrow or not is depending on whether, when we actually see the full return of that money based on a revised revenue schedule.
So, April, your proposed, let's use the 90 percent. We're looking at a 90 percent capacity, an annual revenue of $90,000. $90,184 is accurate?
Yes.
Three years.
Yeah, 23 years you're at.
But that's 90 percent occupancy.
Capacity, yes.
Capacity.
If you want to say give or take, definitely within five years.
Let's go five years. Work backwards. What is it at five years? What's the percentage?
You mean the return on investments?
Yeah, what would be... No, what percentage occupancy do you have to have to maintain a return on investment of five years?
I'm not sure I understand the question that... As far as like a break even point, is that what you're talking about?
For 245, over five years, we would have to have X amount of annual...
$50,000 a year, yeah. So, $50,000 a year, what is that as a percentage occupancy?
Less than 50 percent.
Less than 50 percent.
Okay, that's what I was trying to get to. What, we're rolling the dice on this. 50 percent's not a bad deal because there's hardly anything around.
And it becomes...
We did verify our waiting list. Staff ended up calling everybody that's on the waiting list. There, we were up to, I believe she said, 68 on the waiting list. And it panned out that we still have 49 people on the waiting list that were, that had, that are still here. Some had moved, you know, maybe she couldn't get a hold of some people. They found someplace else. But for whatever reason, we have 49 confirmed.
How many do we have now?
I believe there's 22 spaces out there.
So, we're almost at that.
What are we looking at on the assumption of the financing? Five-year, five-year term?
I believe we... It's a five-year note, right?
Yeah, five-year note.
Bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, it is always difficult to oppose a project that follows supervisor's favor and that management has spent time and effort on. I have questioned spending time and money on a new expanded storage lot since it was first discussed. When we last talked about it, we were told that the amount would be about $100,000 and I agreed to let the engineers price it out. Now, we're being told that the price, that the price will be almost $300,000 and I can no longer support it. I urge you to consider the following. Even if the financial projections are correct, we will be spending general fund money this year, which was not budgeted. Providing storage for yachts, land, or water is not a necessary function, such as soccer or swimming, for all residents. We have had trouble running a dog park. Why do you think we're gonna run a large parking lot? The amount on the traffic on this road out here is gonna be much heavier. Using public funds to be in competition with private business can lead to trouble. I urge you to consider those comments as you proceed.
Kathy?
I'm gonna agree with Bill this time around. We don't have a money tree out there. And we seem to be spending an awful lot of money. And it really does come directly from the residents. And, you know, we can't keep asking residents to keep raising their taxes. So, I think this is a little bit expensive at this point. When I first heard it as a sitting in the audience, this has over-doubled the amount that they thought it was gonna start with.
Yeah, and I'll just... What I will say is, this is probably one project that's revenue generating. We have very little opportunity to generate revenue at this district. Now, granted, but the price for this has doubled. It happens. The difference is, we go to profit after potentially three years as opposed to two years, maybe three and a half years as opposed to a year and a half in the first model. I mean, if... And I understand the budgeting concern, but this particular project can pay for itself. It becomes profitable after a few years. And we're not talking about $10,000 to $15,000 that we currently have. We're talking almost upwards of $90,000 of net, almost net new revenue. I mean, that alone, to me, makes this project worth the initial investment because it basically just pays for itself.
Well, and the initial investment is virtually the $45,000 that we've already incurred. So, you've already made a $45,000 expenditure on this by having the engineers provide a design.
Margaret, I'd go one step further. I'm surprised a little bit at the cost, but not really. That happens when you start going from a preliminary and then get into detail. The big one I don't like with what we currently have is I don't like the idea of this setting out here and we have an access to every Tom, Dick, and Harry coming in here with all the assets we have inside this building. And we don't have guards around here. We got a need. So, I would go along with it, I agree.
And to add another log to that fire as far as a liability perspective, in the event of a catastrophic event such as a hurricane, we could really be in a pickle with those residents having their units out there and, you know, turned upside down, fuel exposure, things into our building as far as an operational perspective, you know, because insurance policies in an event of a catastrophic event are sometimes slow. You know, so that's also a risk that we have just by having it so close to our facility. The engineers did come up with some ideas as far as how to minimize the costs. And if you want them to speak to that, that was some of the other, the options. They provided two alternatives here.
Pray tell, we have insurance coverage on this out here right now? A little duck fell out of the sky there. That scares me to death.
We don't insure.
We don't insure.
We have property building facility insurance.
Yeah, but their trailer coming through our building in a storm, whose problem? Do they, in other words, do they know we're doing this? That we have property right adjacent to us that we're renting out as storage?
As far as the... I got, I received an estimate relative to the new facility. I did not ask, I'm presuming, it's there, it's been there since I arrived. So, I was just presuming that your insurance company knows.
I'll give you 10 to 1 they don't know.
I didn't ask that question, I apologize.
They didn't know that we had roads, so I don't know why they would know we'd have this. Another reason to get it out of here, put it someplace else.
Well, we can invite those people to move their vehicles down to Uncle Bob's Storage down on Lee Boulevard.
Yes, and that's something you, that you raised the question, is it appropriate for us to be in this business? We are. And so, that was, that would be something else that you would want to, you know, converse about. Do you continue the service?
I just have a question for Tyler. The 245, that's where what you've determined as the best solution, where, let's call them upgrades, I guess asphalt, I don't know if that's an upgrade or not. But, in your opinion, what would be the, your recommendation for this facility without going too far above and too far below? Would that be a good...
Yeah, I mean, so, this estimate that we put together, this was, I mean, like, this was near the Cadillac version of it. So, there's a lot of things you can do to cut the price down on this. And that was what, you know, at one point when we came forward to board and asked, you know, what is it that you want out of this facility? There's things that you can do without, for sure. Site lighting, you can save $40,000 probably by moving site lighting out of the deal. So, if the desire of the district is to make it cheaper, you can make it cheaper. And we can definitely look at doing it that.
Tyler, do you have plans done?
We're at 60 percent design right now. I didn't want to go too much farther forward because, I mean, if they don't wanna...
Did it and see what the number is.
I mean, if Gayway doesn't want to move forward with the project, then we didn't want to move too much farther forward with the design. We wanted to get to this phase, present costs, see what options you wanted to move forward with and which ones you don't want to move forward with. There's options to make this cheaper if the district would like to make it cheaper.
Again, I'm a champion of have a base bid and have an alternative bid, knock these things out and see what it is. If it comes in $400,000 like the creep on the Lake Restoration Project, we go back to drawing board. If it comes in $190,000, we run.
I mean, there's, one thing we looked at the other day was, we were looking at having a one-way path through the storage facility to reduce the area of asphalt and base you're gonna put down. I think you can probably save around 10 grand if you went that route, just have one way in, one way out.
245, yeah?
Yes, sir. I think the 245 is including soft costs and all that, construction costs. I think we're saying a base of around $197. So, there's, you know, there's a lot of things you can look at. I mean, you can look at decreasing the area. I mean, you don't have to have the entire site developed if you don't want to. I mean, you know, obviously, there's a revenue attached to more site, more spaces. I get that. But, you know...
If we stay within 250, we have a revenue model to support, you know, three, a little over three years to profitability. And the funding piece we have to talk about as well.
This is general fund, correct?
Well, there's an option, general fund or...
Steven, what's the dollar value per resident of this? I think we're gonna flee on an elephant, you know what, here.
Yeah, you're talking 240...
Say 245. What's that, EAU? Per year, for five-year financing.
About $40?
$40 a year per...
Per ERU?
One time or per year?
No, that'd be one time.
One time.
Which will be offset.
Which is gonna be offset by the revenue.
Right, be offset by the revenue. And it depends on how you want to do that in terms of what you want to offset immediately versus...
It's got far more advantages to me than $40.
So, I will add one more thing, just food for thought. This facility is going to butt up to where the new residential parcel is going to be constructed from Timber Creek. Right now, that property is owned ag. When or if that property becomes residential, you're gonna have to have a lot more buffering between you and them. So, if you ever wanted to do it in the future, at which point, those residential properties next to you, it's gonna get more expensive.
Yeah. And it could be used as a trading card.
Steven, is... What is your recommendation to finances or... Or in general?
Based on our discussion earlier.
What recap?
Probably to have staff go back and see if there is a way, based on priorities, not to because of the dollar amount.
Not to finance.
If you're not gonna finance for the building, then...
Yeah, five years with the ROI, wouldn't even mess with it.
Yeah, this amount, okay.
So, what do we need?
So, do we need a... We need a motion to proceed, Madam Chair?
I believe we want the engineer to proceed, right? With the full design and the actual dollar amounts?
You gotta do that to get to that, to the point of construction anyway. And then, that tells us what the numbers are. We could be sitting here talking about something that could be $400,000 or it could be something to $190,000. I'd like to see the bid numbers and know what it is. I'm going, based on what Tyler's estimate is, to be somewhat accurate. So, at 245 and all the discussion we had, five years, $40 value per resident. I mean, that kind of a return on investment at 50 percent occupancy rate? I just don't see, and the exposure of what we got out here right now? I'd go ahead with it.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
I second.
Further discussion? Kate, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Three of two. Move forward, Tyler.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Forward and cheaper.
Yeah. Washout repair for Pond 83.
Can I just get clarification on that before we move on?
Sure.
That we're moving forward with the storage facility and the new revenue schedule? Are you adopting the revenue schedule here?
You can't adopt it today. You have to have a public hearing.
Okay, but we're moving, but we're moving forward to that, to that. Okay. And also, there's no financing on this, so we're finding another $250,000 in the budget?
Yeah. Currently, that's correct.
The next item is approve the expenditures for Pond 83 and Magnolia Lakes. What is being requested is the proposal that's been provided by Copeland Southern Enterprises for $51,775 to fix the washouts on Pond 83 and also to approve the refund not to exceed $5,554 for the electrical costs from 2000, from January 2007 through February 2017. Exactly where that's gonna end, whether that be a January bill or a February bill, I allowed an extra month in there, just for sure. Yeah, I think, I think it might be February.
Question, Margaret. Is this, well, where is the money coming from on this? What account are we taking this out of?
It's in the budget amendment.
It's in the budget.
No, no, this is one of the lines that's in the budget amendment.
Okay.
It would have to be added. It's not there right now.
Okay. Second question is, is that I don't know this vendor at all. Are they an engineer or is this a construction company doing engineering work? I don't like doing projects that don't have an engineer's deal behind it. We did that on 104 and everybody remember what happened there?
I believe Copeland's been doing work in Pelican.
He has.
Has somebody got some experience with them?
They are going to be doing the work. We're still debating with them about the price, but on our Pond 27, they are the ones who have...
I'm asking who's doing the design work? Because I think what we're doing here, if I'm understanding this, is that they're kind of doing a design build. They're designing it and they're building what they designed.
Well, the way that I understand it is they're going in and repairing washouts.
Well, they got plans and sketches. That's designed to me. And do they have a professional on board that's certifying these drawings?
I don't...
I don't want them coming back and saying, "I'm not an engineer."
Okay.
They're not an engineering firm?
No, they are not an engineering firm. Have you been able to talk to...
They don't have an engineer on the side.
No.
See if they'll go out and get the plans certified. Put that on their back. Stamp the plans. We're running the risk. If they go out and it fails, they're gonna say, "Well, I wanted an engineer." Sorry, he left.
Do you have any experience with Scott Copeland?
No.
Okay. I know he's done work in the district, but we can definitely go back and request that.
Ask Danny that question. I thought we'd asked, we went down this road before with the episodes of the days of 104 where we tried to avoid retaining an engineer and just have a contractor design it and utilize the materials and follow the manufacturer's guidelines. And we know what happened to that.
That worked well.
I think we have way before that. I mean, dating back probably five, six, seven years ago, we just don't learn from our mistakes.
I think translated that says, "We better watch what we're doing on this." Let's just make it easy. Have them retain a consultant to stamp their plans and certify that everything's fine.
Danny, have you reviewed this, this proposal?
I have not reviewed the proposal. I've seen it, I've glanced at it, but I've only glanced at it.
Because my next question was gonna be, did you have any objection to it?
No. Tyler's looked at it in more detail, but I mean, I've looked at what they're proposing and I don't, I don't have a problem with that. But, I mean, Ed's point's well taken and I agree with it. It's, I mean, same thing with the eration that we had in Pelican, so...
This is just one can that I hate.
I have no problem, I have no problem with the project going forward. It certainly is needed. I'm just, I don't want to set a precedent that we're going out and having contractors because the next thing that's gonna come in is somebody else that's not on Phase 1 project, one of the next eight, is gonna say, "Well, let's do mine this way. I got Billy Bob out here, he's got a backhoe and he's gonna take care of ours." That's the last thing we need. We don't want to do that. Just put the monkey on their back to come back and provide a stamp on their design and then we proceed with it.
Okay, are they gonna do something like that there just for washout repairs? I mean, because that was like what Brad Rogers went over and did on that one pond and fixed washout repairs. We didn't have engineering in the site.
Yeah, but I think this is a little bit more extensive of a repair is the difference. Just doing some of the washout repairs, that's routine maintenance. But this is a little bit more significant. I agree, it needs to be done.
Okay, so, we're not, we're not going to have a motion on this yet until we find out about the engineering certification.
Yeah, I'd have a contingent, motion with the contingency.
Kathy?
Yes. There's nothing in here about a warranty. Okay, because Mrs. Welsh has come to this board a few times and this, they've repaired it and repaired it. So, we need some kind of warranty or guarantee that when it is repaired this time, that this is going to last.
Get one year and that's gonna be it.
Okay. Somebody wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I'll go back. I'd make the motion to, on the contingent basis that they provide a certified stamp on the product they're doing, that we go on ahead and select them to do the... Could you add warranty to that, please? I think it is the stamp, is the warranty in the state such that it's one-year automatic on? So, you have to add it or require one...
There are certain implied warranties of merchantability and usability for the product.
One-year warranty. One-year warranty would be standard then. Yeah, thank you.
Tony, second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Get her done, get her done. Needs to be done.
Do we need to do a separate motion for the electrical, the electric bill refund or no?
No, I'll make that motion to go ahead and do that.
What are we doing, please, please?
Refunding the cost, the electrical cost?
Now I got you. The electrical.
$5,554.
I'm assuming we did the calculations and all that.
The calculation is pretty much based on the last couple of years of costs and just extrapolated back for the years we didn't... We didn't, we didn't invest too much time in it.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
To whom is the check going to be made?
Florida.
Magnolia Lakes HOA.
We tried.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Moving right along. Maybe this is Construction Services, Hagan Engineering?
Yes, this is Chris Schumaker, District Manager. And this is a contract with Hagan Engineering, where you're one of the lake bank restoration project. And it is basically boots-on-the-ground construction supervision of that job. And it's a, it's a little different from what Tetra Tech does at the top end with some of the construction supervision documents for the SRF. And this is basically somebody out there day-to-day going to all five ponds and doing the inspection, and also working closely with Tetra Tech to make sure the job's completed on time and on its budget. And I would refer to them as an owner's representative. They don't work for Tetra Tech, they don't work for the contractor, they work for us. And they have a solid background in this type of pond work. Came highly recommended.
Chris, is this, is this contract, and I'm sorry, I didn't look thoroughly through it, is this just for the duration of the five ponds? Or is it on a contract basis for a certain length of term?
This is for the five ponds.
Five ponds.
For that period of construction as well.
And it's in the budget?
It's in the, yeah, it'll get paid for out of the SRF.
It's in the budget.
It's a hundred and fifty thousand in the budget, so we got a sixty thousand dollars savings.
I, I knew your eagle eye would catch that.
We have to do Tetra Tech next.
I, I know who, I've talked to this gentleman also, along with Chris, and I'd, I'd go along and make the motion to approve this contract.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Tetra Tech. See, I told you they were.
Yeah, you did.
I think there still will be a little savings.
Construction services agreement?
Yeah, this is the construction supervision, same thing with the five lake banks. And what Tetra Tech's doing is construction management. And it's, I would call it a little more of the top end, it's more heavy on the office end and the paperwork end, that they will be out in the field with us and working with our field folks.
And this is an SRF requirement?
Very good estimate on that one.
Yeah, no, this is the construction management for SRF. You have to have a certification.
Now, this one includes thirteen lakes. Is that correct? It's not just the first five? It's not limited to the first five, all thirteen are here?
It's Phase One.
It's Phase One and the first five ponds.
Year one.
Again, I'd make the motion to approve this. I've looked at everything on it.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Excuse, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm late.
We go too fast.
But on page one hundred and thirty-one of our agenda, I'm looking at thirteen lakes here.
That's what he just said, Bill. This, this covers all thirteen, not just the first five.
All of Phase One.
Oh, I thought he said it just covered the first, the first five.
No, no, this contract is for all thirteen Phase One lakes.
Thank you, I misheard. Thank you, I vote aye.
Thank you. Okay. Creative World Schools Plan Review.
Who's taking it?
This is basically just bringing this back to you, bringing the plans back to you for approval after the conversation. I, I believe there was some questions from certain board members. There was a meeting and some clarification received on, on those questions. And now this is just coming back to you to approve those plans.
These were answering all the requirements that Tetra Tech came up with. Danny was, everything satisfactorily answered?
Yes.
Responded to?
And I met directly with them as well, around the traffic flows and.
You're satisfied?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Motion to approve.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Just one, one question on this one, I'm not going to retract to the approval, but rumor on the street is, is that they're going to have a neighbor across the street. Have we seen anything on that? Because what I'm worried about is, if it's indeed a restaurant, that traffic could get real interesting in there.
I've heard it's skinny dogs.
Skinny dogs, is what I've heard.
Fat cats.
Oh, no. Fat cats, skinny dog, yeah.
I don't, I haven't heard anything.
Have we seen any plans or anything on that? Could be a traffic. Traffic could get really interesting in there.
Those plans will be submitted to us before, when they, they are, just like, okay.
Thank you. All right.
Keep an eye out for skinny dogs.
I think it's about time for a traffic light there.
Task Authorization for Engineers Report for Funding Validation.
We approved that at the last meeting, I believe. Now, now all we have is a contract.
This was approved at the last meeting?
I believe it was approved for him to do it, and we were waiting for the contract. And now, now we have the contract.
Okay, well, I apologize.
That was my understanding.
I didn't realize it was approved at the last meeting.
Yeah, for the bond validation engineers report. Yeah, positive that was approved at the last meeting. It was indicated that we had to do it.
Yes, sir.
I think this is also just a gratification to clarify that.
Yeah, so, motion to approve the, not to exceed a fifteen thousand for the bond validation engineers report.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Wastewater Pump Station Rehab.
Chris Schumaker, utility manager's hat on. We solicited bids for rehabilitation of wastewater pump stations, and actually for three of the stations. This item is in the budget this year for sixty thousand dollars. It was anticipated they could do three stations for that. We received bids fifty-four thousand, fifty-seven thousand, and sixty-nine thousand for that particular pump station. And the bids were about seven to eight thousand dollars lower for the other stations, but this one was our priority number one. It has problems with the coating inside. It has problems with all the piping due to the gas inside the wet well, and really needs some work done on it. And we'll also be fencing that station and including the cosmetic slats in there, too. So we'll be upgrading the station across the board. And we're also going to test out our new bypass pump and use that on the project.
So you're looking for a motion to approve the low responsive responsible bidder who is in the best interest of the district?
Absolutely, that's correct.
Got that. I'll make that motion.
Second. Question? You said this was in the budget. Is this is in the enterprise fund capital?
Yes, sir, in the enterprise fund capital, it's sixty thousand dollars.
Thank you.
This, this one is scary, those pictures are scary.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
This looks like the budget amendment.
Yeah.
Better be approved of this, well, we did.
Steven Bloom, Severn Trent. Actually. So what we did is we put together a budget amendment. The budget amendment includes several different layers and types of changes that we were trying to accomplish. Based on our earlier discussions, we may or may not be able to continue with the version you have in front of you, but I at least wanted to kind of walk you through what we did, what the numbers mean. And then in particular, on the capital projects amendment, that would be where we probably will have to do some more work based on the earlier discussions. So the first page is really just a top-level summary to show you overall what the budget amendment would look like. And what it, what it does is it shows you the different categories and the different funds, and what would be changing. Now, the good news in this, even after all the changes we're making to the general fund for capital projects, because that doesn't really affect your pure general fund, the operational changes and then the organizational changes, the net is favorable for this current, for the rest of this fiscal year. It's a little bit under ninety-five hundred dollars. And, and we'll go through it in detail a little bit more on what that, you know, what is in that. So from that perspective, your general fund would not be using up any additional reserves of any kind based on these changes for the rest of this year. Pelican Preserve would go up a little bit, it's about eighty-five hundred dollars. And you can see the majority of that is as a result of the organizational changes, which again, you know, filters through three different funds, general fund, Pelican Preserve, and enterprise. And the enterprise size, side would have the largest. That would have to require eleven thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollar increase in the overall budget. And again, that would, that would come from your retained earnings. The last two columns are kind of where the capital projects are showing, and that six hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars was the big number we talked about earlier. And we do have a page that shows you the details. And I think that's where staff's going to have to kind of go back, reprioritize things, and come up with a, a different plan. And then the last side of that is the capital project fund for the enterprise. But again, looking at the first three funds, which really are your operational stuff, the net impact of everything we're doing is not significant in terms of that. It's really the projects where you start to see some of the big changes. Now, moving on, what I've done is, I've kind of took this first page and then split it out, kind of blew it out, and gave you more details as to what exactly we were changing. I, I won't go line by line, I just want to kind of give you a taste, then we can do any questions. But the first one here is again a summary of all three of them. Operational changes, capital changes, and the organizational. When you go beyond this page, then you get a little bit better breakdown. It's a little bit easier to digest. So starting with the operational changes, the key here is the budget for public safety. When we did the budget, we put in a hundred thousand dollars, just to kind of give us some, some cushion. As a part of this amendment, we would be reducing that budget down to fifty thousand dollars. And that's really the bulk of what you're seeing here for operational changes. And again, it's kind of reprioritizing things and trying to find some additional places in the budget to cover some of the other increases. Now, moving to the next page. These are all the results of all the organizational changes that were made. You know, kind of going through a little bit here, you know, adding, adding a staff position for district manager, business manager, public works. You can see some of the other things that go along with that, whether it's vehicles, furniture. There's a line in here for outsourcing payroll. And then I showed you reductions, and, and the bulk of those reductions are coming from the scope change in the Severn Trent contract. And then you basically are seeing additions and reductions, and then a net. And again, I, we focus a lot on the general fund because of the assessments that are related to it. But what you see here is, for the rest of this year, for the general fund, to make all these changes, it would require an additional forty thousand dollars in spending. And that is what gets offset by our prior page, which was the fifty thousand dollar reduction, where you get your favorable net.
You see the forty thousand? Steven, is that hundred thousand for Pond, or is that hundred thousand a part of where that Pond eighty-three was going to come from?
The next page. When you roll to the next page, you can see Pond eighty-three washout restoration.
Oh, it's separately delineated?
Yes.
Then lake bank restoration is what?
That was just a.
Miscellaneous budget item?
Yes. That what, no, remember, in addition to the budget of miscellaneous amount for our other potential restoration outside of what we're doing with the state revolving loan process.
So Steven, how does our discussions from earlier, like with the paying cash for the Girl Scout building and some of the other things we talked about, how does that?
Right.
And how is that affecting?
When you get to the. This page, which is the capital improvement page, that's where you start to see the effects of that.
Page number, please?
I'm sorry.
One fifty-eight.
Yes, one fifty-eight. So in here, we talked about it earlier. We did budget eight hundred thousand. The numbers that we saw as a part of both the purchase and the renovation was actually closer to nine fifty, getting up to almost a million dollars. So we had to make at least an adjustment to the budget for that. This particular version has your storage facility in there as well, which would be an increase. We just talked about, there's an extra hundred thousand here for lake bank restoration. Pipe cleaning, which is something that's already been approved. There, that work has already been approved.
Was that in the budget?
No. It was actually in your budget last year, which, the end of the year, all, everything, any prior year not spent gets washed out at the end of the year, and you have to approve it again. And then you see a couple other lines that was requested, landscape clearing for Pond project, and then what we just approved, which is the Pond eighty-three washout restoration. There was a reduction also put in here for the soccer complex. Originally was budgeted at a hundred, and this amendment reduces it to fifty K. So that number right there in that one column is about your six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And that is a hundred percent changing of your budget. Now, this plan originally funds that with a hundred and fifty thousand of reserves, and then the balance coming from the loan proceeds. So to answer your question, that loan proceeds number is where we would have to go back and make some adjustments now. It doesn't mean we can't get to that point. It just means, you know, it's March second today. What can, what's going to get done in the next six months? What has to get done? What can be pushed out? And just kind of reassessing priorities.
You were saying a hundred and twenty thousand? Sorry, Ed. You said a hundred and twenty thousand would have to come from reserve?
A hundred and fifty.
A hundred and fifty.
Yes.
So the other thing I think that we should seriously consider is phasing in any renovations that we're doing to buildings, because that, if we, if we reduce that eight hundred by a hundred and fifty, we'd still have three hundred thousand dollars to do renovations.
Yeah, we could, we could do that. I mean, I think the first priority is to get the administrative side of the house.
One step at a time.
Right.
Say again, please, Doug?
We look at, again, priority at that building. You know, so the administrative side, whatever is, you know, required, high priority, do that. So the other side, it's the boardroom and some of that other stuff, we can, we can phase that in over time. And not over time, I don't mean five years, I mean just.
Into, into fiscal eighteen?
Yeah, yes, sir.
So this, the, the revenue that would be obtained for the parking, that doesn't come into play on this whatsoever?
No, because you're going to, majority of that, if you, well, again, if you had financed it, you're actually going to pay your loan off, you know, first and so forth. Now, if you don't have to finance it, finance it, then obviously you're going to save interest, and then phasing it in, like I said, it's not like there are any other options. It just means we'll have to go back. It just means we'll have to go back and kind of kick this around a little bit more and see what else we can come up with.
So, do you want, are you asking for us to approve this, or do you need to bring it back to us with, with some of these changes we've talked about?
Well, again, and I'd probably like to get the staff's opinion on that as well. This is just a budget amendment. It's, it's not a blank check to go start running out and doing anything. This would just basically be the approval to be able to bring future things back to the board to, to, you know, get different things started. So, you can approve this, and it does not mean I'm going to be going out and getting, you know, five different loans.
I don't see why we don't table this.
And then that's the other options you can table it?
I would table until we figure out the, whether our contract gets approved for the Girl Scout building, what the, the bid comes back with the, or the next phase for the storage unit, or else we'll just have to have another amendment.
There's a lot of things happening.
I agree absolutely.
And I think the last thing that I would say, and we started this process, I think it was last year, really, we have to kind of take a look at where your assessment rates are going to go based on some of these decisions.
I don't want to hear it.
Well, if it's going down, you do. I just don't want there to be any surprises, as when we're starting to do this, your, your next budget, you're going to, you know, you still want to be moving forward. You like the momentum of things going forward. We need to be able to provide you a three-to-five-year projection of what's going to happen, and that's kind of part of this as well, and if you're phasing things in and out, then you are going to want to have that. So, we have some of those models already built. We'll just update it, and again, your budget process is not that far away, so.
That would be very good. Anything else that you...
Did I cover everything fairly?
Can I just clarify the comment that was made as far as not doing a budget amendment soon? I mean, I think, I think the idea is, in some of the conversations that we've had, is we need budget amendments more timely. We need to have Stephen adjust the budget on these account strings so we can actually see what our budget actual is, especially as we move into the second half of the year. So, I would rather us bring a budget amendment back to the very next meeting and put pressure on us.
Yes.
Okay, I didn't want to wait until the design plan stuff. Okay, all right.
Yeah, let me make sure I got that clear. We would pull out the capital project stuff out and bring back the other two pieces, which you've already approved, basically organizational changes and the operational changes, and that's kind of, to April's point, we'd get that cleared through on all the account strings.
Thank you, Stephen. Okay.
Just to clarify, are we bringing that budget amendment back for a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Without the capital component?
Without the capital component.
Supervisor Flaherty?
Read the new one. The one you just called.
Yeah, the supervisors, yes.
I have a question for the attorney?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Can we vote, are we, is it legal for us to vote on this?
Yes.
It is not a conflict of interest. I understand your compensation provided by statute.
All right.
Is this where we ask for an increase?
Just as we row.
Well, unfortunately, or fortunately, depending upon your perspective, there is this statutory cap.
There it is.
Unless you have a referendum.
Right, so basically, this is just a housekeeping item. I looked back, as we, as we're working on outsourcing payroll, I'm going to switch around. We're trying to, I polled you guys as far as, you know, is it okay if we paid you once a month, just trying to streamline some processes, finding some efficiencies, and I couldn't find actually a policy, which historically, and in my background, there's typically a vote where, where elected officials are either electing to get paid or to not get paid, and I could not find that. And so, basically, this is just tidying up that process to make sure that we have something on the books as far as how we get paid, and I think at one point in time, there were some comments that, what I wanted to try to clarify, and I, and I think we're comfortable with it. Tony, are you comfortable with the fact that in the event that one meeting is missed, do we have to deduct from the payer?
Yes, because the statute says an amount not to exceed two hundred dollars per meeting.
Okay, so it does have to be absolutely per meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Excuse me, Madam Chairperson?
Yes.
April, I seem to remember that we had a conversation written or verbal about changing things to a once-a-months payment. Is my, what's, what's the latest on that, if any?
Well, that's one of the reasons why I'm bringing this before you, is because I'm trying to establish that process, and so, yes, as soon as we get to the point of outsourcing payroll, then we're going to switch you over to once a month. Right.
So, we have a majority that said once a month?
Right, and then I will, if, if we could, approve this subject to the revision, where I'll make a clause in there that we deduct it for, make a deduction for absence. I don't have that in there.
I'll show it to you.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? No. And security awareness is the next one, April.
This is another housekeeping item. We are currently being charged, I believe it's thirty-nine dollars a month for noncompliance on our PCI program, and so, we've been working with our merchant services provider, and they have a program of some, you know, really general protocols that we should adopt as a policy, and this is, this is essentially their language, their template put on to our SOP format, and we're hoping that by adopting this policy and implementing some, some training and communication with staff, that we can eliminate that thirty-nine-dollar a month fee.
So, where is that thirty-nine-dollar a month fee coming from?
I've currently requested some information. We're not exactly sure where it's...
I haven't seen anything.
I presume, I presume it's probably coming out of the enterprise.
Oh, where's it coming out of?
If that's what you're asking.
Who's charging us? Yeah.
Bluefin, I believe, is our merchant services.
They're responsible for charging.
And that's because we don't have a protocol in place? Is that why they're, they're charging us that?
Correct.
Okay.
It's a noncompliance fee.
Okay. Gotcha. Geez.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? And imagine it, that all right. Okay. First, networks lightning detection system.
Okay, so Randy Smith was not available to be here and present, and I thought he was going to be available for a, a phone call in the event that you had any specific questions, but I was unable to get ahold of him today to verify that. Basically, what we're asking for is approval for a lightning detection system at the sports complex and also the pool facility, for a total of sixteen thousand, four-four-four. One of the things that I, I would like to comment on that I, that I included on here is also directive to management to establish a standard operating procedure. I did consult with Tony on this. Of course, we're all aware of, you know, some of the risks associated with having these lightning detection systems. Tony provided a memo that they are not required, but we should have a written protocol. My main concern is that we have this lightning detection system at a facility that is unmanned by staff, you know, which is the soccer complex, and so, I think that it would be in our best interest to approach this more from a liability perspective, not just as a, a service that we're providing to, to our residents.
And we should consider adopting a clause for our lease agreements or lease contracts that they agree to adhere to our, our policy.
Yeah, and if, in my memo, paragraph F, and references language in all the agreements also as to what they will do in the case of the system being activated, it's sort of a provision from, can't recall if it's Cape Coral or Lee County, but it's a good clause they put in the agreement, as well as the type of signage that was in the memo.
Yeah, so, right, we'll have to have, we'll have to have some signage, you know, come up with a written policy that, of course, I'll work with, with Tony on to make sure that we've covered all of our bases. This is a contractual, this is the same contract that Lee County, the City of Cape Coral, and the City of Fort Myers uses, and it's also the same, the same technology.
Is there any insurance ramifications of this?
Not that I'm aware of, but I did not check on that as far as checking with the insurance company.
Yeah, I think people have a conversation with their carrier. Agents are usually very good about the more signage, the more notice, the more warnings, the better. That's generally the approach.
Maybe if there was a credit or a reduction.
We're upgrading our system.
Well, yeah, and then so, generally, they're very positive, and the good work, so if you have that phone call with them, any other suggestions they may have on the operational aspect.
Okay.
It's always helpful.
Madam Chairperson? I very much want to be in favor of this, but I very much don't want to have additional liability, and I'm looking at our attorney's paragraph D, where it says, "The district would be creating a duty that does not currently exist, increasing its exposure in this. The district would be required to exercise reasonable care regarding owning, operating, maintaining, and using." I'm, I hate like the dickens to let the attorneys and their good nature decide for us what we're going to do, but I'll tell you, I, I worry about the additional liability that we're incurring.
You mean putting it at the pool?
Pool and soccer.
Well, we have one at the soccer.
Well, we're upgrading it and the, and the additional one at the pool.
Yeah, I think the way to minimize the liability, you take on that duty, is to exercise reasonable care, owning it as to where it's located, operating it, keeping it up to date and current, checking batteries, checking the condition, make sure it's not deteriorating, and using the system following the manufacturers' protocol procedures, and again, then the signage and the agreements, having additional language, I think you're minimizing the liability.
Wouldn't you agree that if something bad happens, there will be personal injury, attorneys looking at every single thing that we did or didn't do?
Yes, and they'll also look at if we did not have a system. In either way, you're going to have someone trying to find an opportunity in that instance to make a claim on the district, whether we have the system or not.
Well, and the, and the one benefit here is that...
You can't prevent that, unfortunately.
It's a system that is used throughout the county, and actually, in a lot of places within, within Florida, which sets a standard of use that I think is, is, puts us in a much better position because of our existing unit, because it's static-based. It's a...
Predictor.
Predictor, it's predictor. It's, so, it's, it's been very inconsistent. I think a lot of times it goes off, most people don't even pay any attention to it. For a while, it was not even plugged in, so I think we're, we're moving.
I think that violates one of those things Tony read.
I renew my statement.
And that's, that's the key to maintain the system. It gets back to, we're talking about the AEDs, anything else, you know, if you may not have a duty, you take on a duty, you have to exercise reasonable care, which gets back to maintaining it, because if people believe there's a system there and it's not being maintained or it's not operable, then you have some issues, so I think that's the key, and you've had the staff to go out there and a, and a protocol, following the manufacturer's protocol or industry practices and standards, you substantially minimize the liability.
Big one.
You go ahead.
Do we have anything that says something to the nature that the use of these facilities are at the user's risk?
I don't know if that totally protects you, but...
Don't hurt.
My question was, is there any, what's, is there a maintenance agreement or anything?
We're talking about carriers.
Uh, yes. Yes, there is, there is an annual maintenance, I thought that was in here. There is an annual maintenance. We currently have an annual maintenance plan with, for, on our current one, and I can't remember exactly, did I not put that in here?
And while you're looking that up, I will say, I have, for each location, you can, well, there's an app, so you can just open up weather bug or whatever, and you can see your specific location and see where the lighting has striked, how far the distance was, so it's really, you know, it's useful. I keep one for JetBlue where my kids play and...
It's in, it's in the small print on the remarks. It's six-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars a year.
Does JetBlue use this system?
Yep.
Yeah, and again, Lee County uses a system, and Cape Coral, Cape Coral has the weather bug. That was, I think, from the Cape Coral website, if I'm not mistaken. Yes, it is. That's fine.
This, the, it says initial term of contract, one year. Is this something that we're going to renew on an annual basis?
For the maintenance.
For the, is that the seven thousand dollars?
No, 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 six-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars.
That's, that's what, okay.
That's a reoccur.
Wanted to make sure I understood. Okay. Any other discussion? Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now, Tony, you had said earlier that you wanted the walk-on item to be...
Continue to explore the meeting, yes, ma'am.
So, supervisor comments? Kathy?
I thought we were going to go with the parking first.
I just thought...
I go with them. I'll wait till later.
You want me to go down to Ed?
Yeah.
Ed?
Let me go first.
Supervisor comments?
I have three. Two are pretty easy. First one is, is I saw something on April's, I was going to bring it up, but the Griffin derived street lighting. I had a discussion with Chuck Bentley of Bentley Electric, who we do work with, and he's more than willing to sit down with us and talk about not only that, but the lighting at the soccer complex, and his thoughts on the design life. If you remember, as I recall, we had one of the capital items that showed like seventy-five or eighty thousand a year projected for five years. He's of the opinion that number is not necessary whatsoever, so we could buy maybe five, six, seven years, so I would recommend that we get ahold of Chuck, sit down with him, and talk about both Griffin and the soccer complexes that relates to lighting.
Has that work been done?
He's working on it.
Okay. So, the, the replacement of the brackets and...
Yeah, and, and to ask what it is, that was done under two proposals that I wasn't even involved, I have no idea what all it is, but I wanted to find out. The next one, just a real quick one, talking to Kenny outside, it sounds like the utility billing and the water meter project is going well, and we're batting well over ninety-nine percent accuracy on the meters, which is good. Where are we at on final payment?
Last week, I had some phone calls from, and emails this week from an attorney representing Port Line. I spoke with him briefly yesterday, and he's going to follow up. He wanted to know what the basic situation was. I'm not sure how much information he had. I think he talked with the account manager. He had not had any conversations with John Tysinger yet, so I indicated he needed to talk to Mr. Tysinger. Their attorney did not know about the amendment where he was removed as the installer, and so, I told him about some of those items, just to help him out.
So, he just started?
Yes, and he was going to get back to me. He says, "What are you all looking for?" I said, "We're looking for the documents that are contractually required. There may be, and when we finally get those, and if we deem them to be a proper invoice under the contract and the statute, there may be some deductions and offsets," instead of offsets, based upon some conversations we've had and presentations at the board." So, he said he appreciated that. I said, "If you want any minutes of the meetings, I'll send them to you. If you want any copies of the documents, I'll send them to you." And I told him that my understanding was there may have been an issue between ST and Port Line as to why ST was not willing to give the necessary documents. I said, "Please call me when you feel like it and get back."
He's got homework to do.
Yes.
Surprise, surprise. The last one I have is the Stony Brook parking issue. I've gotten, brought into this, and I wanted, one, educate myself as to what happened. When I first heard about this, I thought, well, this was within the last year, I slept through a meeting or something. I guess this goes back to two thousand and nine, and I still think I must have slept through a meeting or something, but I went through all the meeting minutes in two thousand nine, two thousand and ten, and I can't find anything. Here's what my... Here's what my concern is, is that those roads belong to the CDD. Stony Brook was done as a development order. That development order did not have parking as a part of the project. And so consequently, I don't know how, and I can't find that we did. I think it may have been simply operations manager at the time, over a wild hair or a drink or a wink and a nod or whatever, did it on his own, that without coming before this board, had stop sign or no parking signs and put in place in Stony Brook. And everything I read and everybody I talked to today at the county indicates that that was not done properly, that we should have gone through a development order amendment in doing that. That is a major change. And I said, "Okay, then what do we need to do about that?" I'm gonna get back to whether or not we did that, but what do we need to do? And he said, "Well, I can just tell you right now, this issue has come up before, and the people that will receive such a deal will tell you right off the bat, they will wanna see a petition, a survey, with a super majority of the people favoring this. Otherwise," they said, "they aren't touching it with a 10-foot pole."
Favouring parking?
Favouring putting in no parking. In other words, you're changing... Right now, they can park there according to the DO. There is no limitation in the DO. They said, "If you're going to add a no parking requirement, before they see a development order amendment that comes back to initiate that, they're gonna wanna see a petition" that everybody...
We're saying no parking on the roads.
On the roads. And the other issue, he said, is that we've got the same problem over in Gateway Greens, and I've talked to Paul Wingard, he's got the problem in his. And as far as I'm concerned, it's a safety issue. And safety doesn't make any difference whether it's public or private. Safety is safety. The other issue is that what we've got over there is if I did that, how would Manscape get around? How would all these other vendors get around? What do they do with their vehicles to provide services to the communities? How does our CDD fix the pump stations? We can't park along the road if we do this. How do you do this? What we came up with is a deal that where you had parking on one side of the road. Maybe you go Tuesday, Wednesday, or Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, you park on the eastbound side, and on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Sunday, you park on the deal. Happy medium. But the issue is, if it's no parking, he said, "It's no parking." You don't have vendors park, you don't have anybody park, because the whole premise of doing it is safety. Now, if vendors are putting cones out, then the question comes, "Well, why can't the residents just put a cone out?" And here we go, full circle and accomplish nothing. My concern is, is that what really got my attention is when we heard fines were being assessed. I don't think we have... Tony can correct me, but I don't think we have the legal right to do that. And if somebody gets sued, I'm not really worried about the master association in Stony Brook getting sued, but it sounds like it's gonna get personal, and we are going to get sued. And I just don't see that you can do that. I know in our association, we do do it. As at with 1201, if you got your car parked out in the street, we tow it. But ours are private. Makes a big, big, big difference. The only way that I understand that anything that can be done in the way of monitoring these public roads is it has to be done by Lee County Sheriff's Office. And again, talking to the county today, that ain't a priority. That's not a priority. So I guess my thing is, is that have we got an exposure here because of what was done in 2009, what appears to me to be... I know Danny's firm wrote a letter and indicated that there appeared to be some violations. Well, there's some... You gotta read deeper in between the lines on that 20-foot issue or the 18-foot. If it's a 6-foot, you have to provide a minimum of 20 feet. That's not exactly what it says. It's not exactly what it says. But the issue is that if you had a restriction like on a county road, if you had a restriction like a bridge or something like that, you don't want anybody parking there because you can't be able to get around it. If you had a fire emergency vehicle, they'd have to go through the creek. Whereas if you had an open area, they could always go around it. The county's position on this is if this came into play at the county, 95% of the roads, you'd have a trouble. You wouldn't be able to enforce it. So I bring up the issue of where this started and what the basis is. It sounds good, I like the idea. But is it what the residents want? Two, is it legal relative to the action our board took in 2009? Or maybe not our board, our operations manager? And then the last one is the fines issue. So I throw that out for... And I know there's some residents here that have voiced their opinion on some of it. But my fear is, is that we did something... What everybody thought maybe in 2009 was a good idea, but I don't know that it was legal, what we did.
I don't know who you spoke with at the county, but I know that our entire HOA board at Stony Brook in 2010 went down to the county and met with a couple of, two or three people from the county.
DOT.
And they said, basically, "This isn't our jurisdiction. We don't have any say in this." And we were told at that time that no permitting was required to put the signs up. Because that was a question that got asked by one of our board members. Didn't the signs require permitting? And we were told no.
I'm passing on what I got from the people who are in the no. I don't know who your people talked to, but they didn't talk to the right people. We have to go through design review downtown. And it's because it was not in the original development order.
I think it would be helpful to know what the individuals made, because I think, must say, this issue has been going on for a while. And if I recall, I didn't gather all the materials I have on this. I tried to retrieve a bunch from my archived emails. But there were a number of Stony Brook Advisory Committee meetings. I think that the minutes even showed up in the board minutes, chapters that referenced this. And correct, the district can add and publish fines, but I disagree that the district needs to get a development order to prevent obstruction of its roads. I think that's my humble opinion. In fact, the district has the ability, as we talked before, to have towing on district-owned property if we adopt procedures and rules. And I don't think that would require... I'm not sure I understand how that would require Lee County approval, to say we have to get Lee County approval for a vehicle is obstructing a road to have it towed.
I don't think they're doing that, Tony. I think the issue is that what I heard from Randy Cerchi and Brian Miller, and they said, "Call Dave Loveland, because his deal will do it." And he said, "I can tell you what they're gonna do, because this has come up before." He said, "Issue one is, is that we go back and look at the original development order." And apparently, there have been those that have done that. And it's silent. It has all your stop signs and all the other things. He says, "I remember you people well out at Gateway." And I said, "I think this is gonna get personal." We had an episode over in Gateway Greens before I got on the board, qualify that, where we had a bunch of people that wanted to go in and put stop signs and not follow the proper procedure. Those were not called for in our development order, and it got tabooed. But the issue is, there's procedures you have to go through, and that is one that he said, "They are of the opinion that is a major deal that has to have a deal in mind." But, he said, "Before we even take that, we're gonna wanna see a survey that the residents wanted." The last thing we wanna do is to have a public hearing on a development order amendment and then be swamped with 75%, 80%, 20%, whatever the number is, of people saying, "We don't want it." That's issue one. That covers our rear ends here, that we did it right. The fining is a totally separate issue. I think I read something that Tony had done, that you cannot fine people for violating this, which... We don't even have that authority, so we don't... We can't pass that on to the HOA, because we don't even have it. So I wanted to bring those up, because there's some people here in the audience that might wanna add to that. But I'm concerned whenever somebody says that there's a possibility of litigation and supervisors are going to be sued, they get my attention.
Tell them to bring it on.
Yeah, and if they were suing the board members individually, that's inappropriate, because it's a governmental body.
I understand. It's just, we need... I think we need answers on this. We've got a very good transportation engineer that lives out there and has a lot of information. And then we have an assistant county attorney that lives out there. And I know there's been some emails going back and forth. I'm not gonna get in the middle of the legal, I'm not an attorney. But I do know one thing, that those fines, at least from the HOA side, that dog isn't gonna hunt. And if you don't have the fines, no way you've even got the signs. Anyway. Sort of sounded like OJ Simpson, didn't it? The glove don't fit, you must've quit.
So the people that you spoke with at the county, I just wanna clarify, were all in the DOT?
DOT, correct. Correct.
You didn't talk with anybody in planning?
No, didn't go that far. I don't like to ask a question that I don't know the answer to. And first thing I do, bring that up. Next thing I know is we'll have a letter for non-compliance of something done in 2009. I think maybe my advice would be, we have the attorney check to find out the validity of this issue of the development order. I went through, and somebody else might be able to find it, somebody in staff gave me a listing here, and I guess Scott Connell prepared this, and it says October, it goes through all the dates. August 6, Tetra Tech did their report, and then a whole bunch of other things. Stony Brook Advisory Committee meeting minutes and all that. Then it says, "October 27, 2010, district confirmed that additional signage was ordered." There was no October 27, 2010, CDD meeting. And the meeting that was before it and the meeting was after it didn't discuss it either. My old deal is, is I don't even know that this thing ever even came to this board to make the decision to do what was done. I think it was done by Bill Knight.
Chris, I think so.
Which really scares me.
We did at least have one person that signed up the street.
We have two that would like to address this topic. Magda Scala and Ted Trish.
Good afternoon. Ted Trish, I live at 1262 Jimstone Court in Stony Brook. And as a right, this issue goes back a long time. It's really not the issue of should the signs be there or not, but my feeling is they shouldn't be there. But my issue has been recently, should the HOA be issuing fines? And because they're public roads, because of the statutes, because GSD does not have the authority to issue fines, how can then the HOA... And the whole guise of the HOA has been in the past, that it's been a safety issue that because it's in the Stony Brook HOA declarations or the covenants and the bylaws, that they're enforcing those bylaws. But it's still a parking and still traffic enforcement on the road. So that's kind of how this whole issue got started about a year ago. Because the residents, they were issuing a lot of street parking fines, a lot of the residents were upset. You know, you... Some, most driveways, you know, you can only have two cars in. So if you have guests over, they end up parking on the street. The HOA decided to form a committee of the residents, which was done. I believe there was several meetings of that committee. And the results of the committee were to basically send out a, what they called a non-binding survey. And Margaret can speak more to that than I can, since she's on our HOA board. But the results of the survey were pretty telling. We got about a 41% return rate on the survey. And the majority of the survey respondents wanted some form of on-street parking, whether that was a restriction between midnight and 7:00 AM, similar to what Gateway Greens has, or parking by special permit from the clubhouse. Regardless, over 74% wanted some form of on-street parking. So that's why we pursued this issue of changing our bylaws from an HOA standpoint. And at the last meeting, Margaret was provided a letter from Mr. Pierce that said, you know, the HOA basically has no authority because they are public roads. And so that kind of got us here where we are tonight. So first and foremost, we're asking that at least the GSD tell the HOA, the Stony Brook HOA, to stop issuing fines, because they can't do it legally. But a win-win would be removal of the signs. The streets aren't too narrow. There's not a safety issue. I encourage you to come out this Saturday when we have our community garage sale, where you won't be able to drive on the streets, because there's parking everywhere. I mean, I can't get my kids to the soccer game on Saturday, because I gotta park at the clubhouse early in the morning, because I won't be able to get out in my street. So if there's gonna be enforcement of no parking, like Ed said, it's gotta be 100% contractors, and it's gotta be enforced by the Lee County Sheriff's Office. They're the ones that by statute can issue fines for parking. We have an ordinance that's on the books in Lee County that specifically addresses on-street parking. And if we were to permit parking on our street, on our streets in our community, we would be subject to that ordinance. And that ordinance has many things in it, where you can't park. Fire hydrants, distances to intersections, mailboxes, driveways. There's a whole host of things where you can't park on the residential streets. And when you drive through Stony Brook, there are many streets where there just simply isn't frontage on a lot to park. I'm at least a benefit of a wide lot, so I have a lot of grass, and I have a lot of curb space where I could park four or five vehicles in front of my house and not be blocking anybody else's driveway or impeding of... Mike Swift is here, he's my neighbor. We were just out last night, there was a furniture delivery truck parked on the road. In fact, he was on the curve, and there was still plenty of room for vehicles to pass by that truck that was delivering furniture. So nobody's threatening to sue anybody, we're just asking that common sense prevail on this. Just let's just get this issue resolved and move on, so we can all live our lives and enjoy our communities. Thank you.
Thanks, Ted.
My name is Magda Scala. I'm original owner of 12605 Stone Tower Loop. I got involved with this because I was... I had company over, and they were giving a fine of $100 apiece. Well, we were. They voided the fine because I started doing the research. I appreciate your clarifying that what the HOA is doing is wrong. I, like Ted, don't believe in lawsuits. I don't think we should bring it to the court, but I do want the HOA to return every fine that they have given to the residents for the parking. I think it's unfair. When we had the meeting, they were always saying that you said, you did, you wrote, meaning the Gateway Services. I went to the fire department, I went to the Lee County, I do volunteer work for Call for Action, a WING TV. They helped me do some research, and we all came back to the same solution that you said tonight. And I appreciate you doing that, because that would clarify. But I would like you to do for us, if you can come over to Stony Brook and repeat what you just said. That would make things a lot more understood and clear to everyone what we are against, if you could, please.
I think that depends on with the position of the board, whether or not they would consent to doing that. I think the people in Stony Brook that needs to hear this, we have three representatives up here that are all from Stony Brook.
I know that. The gentleman, I met him today, he's very nice.
I think the first thing is, is that we need an answer from legal counsel as to whether or not what we did in 2009 was correct. And if it's not, then we're going to have to rescind that order and pull those signs down post haste.
Well, one of the board members claimed that's against ADA. ADA doesn't want anything to do with the roads. That's completely irrelevant. So ADA is American... Doesn't matter. I know who said it.
Okay.
The point that the county was making on this is that if it were a needed thing, a needed improvement, and it's certainly a violation of the county ordinance. The DO would have never been written without the no parking to begin with. And that's the position they were also saying, which makes a lot of sense.
Are you going to contact the... Well, what are you gonna do about it now? And you are also on the board, so what are you gonna do? You're gonna keep on fine?
I have a couple of minutes to... I'll have...
I think that... Alls I wanna do is bring it up, because I wanna make sure that the CDD is protected. I got a solution for it, but my partner here to the left might not agree with it. I was totally against this stupid bond issue for Stony Brook to begin with. I thought that was a major, major mistake, to drop this off on the CDD, as I do in public observe. These things should be taken by the developer and transferred over to the master associations, period. They'd be private roads, just like every other community in this community has. We have two that are different. It's water over the dam, we gotta live with it. But at least on Stony Brook, my position has been, is that that bond's over with. There's no restrictions left on that bond. The only thing that we're subject to now is 190, I think it's 274, Tony? Statute 274 that deals with disposing of property. Tony and I read that a little bit differently. I read it as that Stony Brook roads is not of a use, a beneficial use, to this district.[1791.83] I read it as that Stony Brook roads is not of a use, a beneficial use, to this district. 90% of the people in this district don't use those roads. So if I had 51%, I could even argue that it's not a benefit to this district. Sell it for $1, have a sale, and let Stony Brook HOA buy it. Who else is going to come in and take the liability of offering $2? Nobody's going to do that. They don't want to touch it with a 10-foot pole. You can't, you can't collect any money on it, you can't put toll gates, so it's ridiculous. Somehow, some way, we need to get that road back over to Stony Brook Master Association as a private entity. Then we don't have the issues with a guardhouse. That guardhouse scares me to death, of having to stop at that guardhouse on a public road. It's got a lot of connotations to it. We made mistakes, and the problem is, they're starting to mount. I just don't want anything to happen that comes back on us, because of some bad mistakes made. Now, what Tony is saying, and that King's English is read his way, and there's no way, under God's green earth, those can be sold, or that road can be sold for $1, and transferred to Stony Brook, then we got the position that they're our roads, and they're always going to be our roads. We'll have to live with it, and then figure out how we resolve these other issues.
The district's clear on the issue of Chapter 274, that applies to personal property, and a road is real property, so it does not apply. That's the statute, tangible personal property owned by local government.
What's, what's the site in 190 that refers to?
190 says, we can acquire and dispose of real property. In a governmental body, there are no specific requirements or criteria for disposal of real property by CDD, but the general principles are, as outlined in some Attorney General's opinion, it would have to be declared a surplus property that is no longer needed for its originally intended purpose.
And that was my argument earlier.
And its originally intended purposes as a road. So I don't know how you can say it's no longer needed for its originally intended purpose. I've had this discussion with the Pelican Reserve folks in the past, and my other CDDs, and I don't believe you can do that.
I understand that, respectfully understand that, but I would like a second opinion on that.
And I know that some of the issues that you've brought up are in contradiction to what we had been told in the past, so I think it's a little bit more research
Research is needed, I agree.
To be done on what people have told you, and so
We've talked many times.
Yes, we have, we have. And I think, Mr. McCulca, you wanted to speak?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you for clarifying.
Tony, what is our, what's the position on the fines? Legal position?
The district has no ability to enforce the traffic laws of the state of Florida, and we do not have the ability to enforce them.
So how does that interpret that into Stony Brook fines today?
I provided previous memorandums, which I'm not sure if it's
Make any simple state, whether it's within or
Back in, and I have copies of this, back in 2013, an issue arose in Pelican Reserve. How about the ability of Pelican Reserve to enforce the traffic law? And I don't, I have some copies for some of the board members, I have the emails from Michael Jacobs in the past, to just, I want to pass these around. And first of all, I'm not sure, and I've known Michael Jacobs for a long time, I'm not sure if he's acting in his capacity, individual capacity, or his capacity as an assistant county attorney. And I like Michael generally, but I'm disappointed in his common attacks against me in this course, but that's another issue.
Welcome to the engineer's world.
Well, yeah, I'm frankly surprised. So if you go to the back, it's about the one, it's after the emails. What is this? There's a memorandum at the end, it's after the emails, it's called Pelican Reserve Advisory Committee. It was a question about the ability of the district, a security service contractor, a property ownership association, to enforce the state of Florida traffic laws on district roads. And look at the memorandum.
Tony, that's not in this here.
Which, okay, I'm sorry, I thought
It's not in there.
Well, I had a memorandum in the past, with regards to the ability of the association, of the district to impose fines. And in my opinion, I provide that association or agents have no authority to engage in any activities that constitute the enforcement of traffic laws on district roads. No authority for the issuance of letters and notices by the association slash agents imposing fines and sanctions, as activities constitute the attempting enforcement of the traffic laws. And I'm sorry, I thought I had extra copies of all of that.
Yeah, that opinion there was not attached to this.
Okay.
That's, that's the difference.
But we do not have the ability to impose fines on district roads, but different violations of traffic laws.
Margaret, back to something you said that concerns me a little bit.
I'm sorry, don't
Is, is that, I agree, we need to do some research, but we got to watch how we do this. I think, let Tony do this.
Absolutely.
Because my fear is, I don't like kicking a sleeping dog. And this thing's been, been sleeping for eight years. Last thing, I want them to come back and come down on us. You knew better than to do that. So, let's let Tony handle this, and see where it goes.
Absolutely, I agree with that.
Yeah, and again, so
That's why I did not talk to them.
So you spoke with Randy Cerchi and who else?
Brian Miller.
Brian Miller?
Can we move on?
Okay. Mr. McCulca?
And what I may request, I'm sorry, is that, give me a month on this one, to go back and look at everything, and I talk to individuals.
I think you need, I think you deserve that time.
Thank you.
I mean, this has been going on for years, so I know everybody'd like for it to be resolved, but that's
Can I just clear up a couple of points? Because a few things are being said, I think we can put to side right away. Number one, I don't know if there was an actual Board of Supervisors meeting that did approve this, but I have a letter that's dated, and you may have it, February 10th, 2010. And this was a result, and a response to Margaret, who was president of the HOA at the time, concerning parking in the streets. And speaking for myself, I actually have a somewhat dovish attitude about parking. I'm not strictly anti-parking, as some up here already know that, and have in fact, supported our choice number two for a modified version of parking on those streets. But, we have been told many times by Tony and others, that there was to be no parking on the street. And from a perspective of fining, we were told, not by one, but by three different HOA attorneys. Now, this is HOA law, which is a little bit different, that from a safety point of view, and their point of view, and other communities are doing it, they are fining for illegal parking, on a safety issue. But I do want to address one more thing here, that's sort of being left, and I think that possibly Magda didn't quite state correctly. Most of the tickets that we give, and we're not fining, we haven't fined for months, we haven't actually fined a car for months for parking. So from that perspective, it's not a ongoing situation. But, many of the tickets for parking are actually given because the cars are off the road. They're on the grass, they're on the sidewalk, they're sticking out into the road, out of their, out of their driveway. And they're, and the statement about violation of the Disabilities Act actually is blocking sidewalks. There is such a law. That's what I think she's referring to. And that is a violation of law, to block sidewalks. We have kids, many, many kids, they got to catch the school bus in the morning, they got to walk down the sidewalks, they can't, because cars are parked in the sidewalk. They got to walk out into the street. Now, one of the concerns of our residents, and I'm not saying I completely agree with this, is from a liability standpoint, that if we allow cars to park in the street, and a kid, and we have a lot of kids, cut out in front of the car, and one is hit, who's at fault? That's what's thrown at us. And we have, if I do share, responsibility as a board to protect the community. So you got to take that into consideration. Whose responsibility is that? Does the HOA, does the CDD have responsibility for not enforcing that and protecting the residents in that community? As we know, Pelican has recently signed an agreement with the city of Fort Myers, to come in and give parking tickets. The district has the right, as of July 1st last year, to tow. Do we want to do that? Not really. In fact, what we do now, at nighttime, we actually go and ring the doorbell. That's what we do with alert. And they tell the people, your car is illegally parked, please move it. The guy goes by the next day, guess what? Same car's parked out in the street again, or parked illegally. Eventually, it's a problem. What do we do? Do we ask the Gateway to do towing? I don't know. But the fact is, personally, during the daytime, I think some parking maybe can be allowed. But we need the okay of the Gateway Services before we'll do it. It's that simple. Because it is a liability situation. Now, no one's addressed 316, because 316 is the state ordinance, and the county has the, as everybody knows, has the obligation to enforce a state statute. The county has the obligation to enforce those statutes, and it specifically lays out guidelines for parking. And there's no doubt about it, if you read that statute, there's no parking on our streets. It's rather clear-cut. There's 30-foot setbacks from the mailbox, 15-foot from driveways. And when you get into any one of our communities, that's, that doesn't leave many parking spots out there. I'd like to see us be able to do something, to come to some sort of an understanding. But we need the attorneys, and we need this board on board to be able to do anything. That's simple. But keep this in mind, most of the tickets that were given weren't just parked in the street, they were parked illegally. And our ordinances, I mean, I'm sorry, our documents specifically say, you can only park in designated parking spots. And front lawns and sidewalks are not designated parking spots. Any questions?
Yeah, Margaret, three, Joe. One, I, I've talked to the attorneys also, but I want to just make sure one thing, do they know these are public roads, not private roads?
Yes, but I will say, though
My attorney, I brought that same up, and he said, oh, that's a whole different ballgame.
Yeah, Ed, one of the problems is that, back from day one, when we bought those houses, and I bought in '04, nobody told us we didn't own those roads. In fact, we went out and hired an attorney to review all the problems in the community, and actually approached Lennar, and they still didn't tell us we didn't own those roads. The day before turnover, they came to this district with the documentation to turn those things over, and we were never told.
We've talked about it, and I agree with you on that. The other one is, is that, my concern is on no parking, is that, and the county made this clear today, it's no parking for anything. Now you've got, what do you call it, moving vans, delivery trucks, they got to stop over there at your
Landscapers, landscapers.
Landscapers.
Park in front of my house all the time, and I cut my own lawn.
Terry Hanlon and our CDD staff.
Yeah.
It doesn't make sense, there needs to be a happy medium.
I agree, I agree.
I would like to see Tony, and I'm glad to hear about the fines deal, because that really concerned me, but let Tony handle it, and see what it is that we need to do. But the one back is, that does not, that doesn't add. If 316 and some of these other things say what they say they say they say, why was the DO approved?
Probably in 2000 or '99.
Why was the DO approved?
I would say 2002.
See, I think, I think the issue was, is that, I don't think they want to touch this issue with a 10-foot pole.
Over there?
Because if it's a problem in Stony Brook, Joe, it's a problem in Gateway Greens, it's a problem in Devonshire, it's a problem, every one of our street, Pelican Reserve, every one of our streets is 10-foot pavement, 2-foot curb, 24 width, and when you take a 6-foot wide car and subtract that, that gives you 18, and 18, 820. You can't solve it.
Would you like, you know, I didn't want to read this whole letter in front, in front of here.
No, no, no problem. Just let me have
Yeah, I'll get a copy of this for you, because it basically spells out how it came to be that the signs, and it was at the insistence of Bill Knight. And Bill did do some research, and he actually required, I think, asked Danny about it.
Yeah, I've got a copy of Danny's letter to Bill.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I just didn't see it going to the board.
Before, before I move on to other supervisor comments, I just want to say that the idea, when the district was originally approached, was that we were asking to have parking on one side, or to restrict it to one side or the other.
That's what a lot of people do.
And then it came back, that we weren't going to be allowed to park on
Yeah. That was not the request of the board, that was the response from the district at that time.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay?
Yeah, thanks, Joe.
Thank you. So, we'll be revisiting
Be revisiting, just make sure that we're clear. Because it has ramifications, it comes back on our HOA also. If it's a danger here, there's a danger here.
Can we have a date? I mean, can we just, maybe, so we're not continually calling and finding out when this is going to be
We'll make sure that you, in fact, you personally are notified of when this will be on the agenda again.
Are we thinking the next meeting, or two meetings down? Or what? Two meetings. Within a month?
First meeting in April.
First meeting in April.
And I know that Mr. Guy won't be at that first meeting in April, so
Oh, I'd rather have the second meeting in April.
Second meeting.
Second meeting in April.
I'd rather have a full board.
Great, thank you, thank you.
And one other note, too, it's interesting, the comment that was made about, like Mr. McCulca made about the various requirements of the mailboxes, that's also Lee County code. That requirement about where you cannot park, track the state statutes. So I find it interesting, the county staff's recent comments, coupled with the district's ability to tow on their own property.
And you could
I find it, one, two, and I find it very
It leaves us in a very difficult situation. We need some help and guidance on this, too.
And I'll get you the name of who the entire board met with. We met with the planning department, so
And that's what they're all
It's different
But there was one attorney there that came in, he was one of the three.
That's true. That is, and I've got those names, but I don't have them tonight.